Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Casa Grande. It is seven o'clock. And first order of business is the invocation on our Pledge of Allegiance. So please remain standing after our Pledge of Allegiance. We have Pastor Eldon tonight. Thank you, Pastor, for coming.
I'm here at the first council meeting of the year.
That's right, the new year.
It's very exciting for everybody. I have to admit, I did not really stay up late on New Year's Eve. I was in bed by ten o'clock, you know, after the big ball goes down in Times Square.
Eastern.
Maybe it should have been a COVID ball this year. Smacky things keeping out.
Wouldn't have been appropriate.
Before I went to bed, I heard one of the commentators saying, "Boy, year 2020, what a dumpster fire." That cracked me up, and I thought, you know, should we really call anything that God made bad? And some really good things still happened in 2020. I mean, the council kept governing, our police department, and all the city employees kept serving the city. Seeds of hope kept feeding people downtown. People had babies, but, you know, so good things happened in 2020. You should never write off something that the Lord has made, even not in a year like 2020.
I think the pandemic was the main thing that just disrupted our lives.
Yes.
One thing I was going to ask you, can we say a prayer and include Matt Herman in our prayer tonight?
Absolutely. Is he?
He's remote. He's remote.
Thank you. I'm here.
Bless you, Matt. Pray with me, please. If we would look up our brother Matthew, I ask for full help for him, for your loving patience to be with him, and for his patience to be fulfilled by you, Father, that then you are able to touch him with your healing hand in both his body and mind and also spirit. So thank you for that great love and blessing you've given over all of our lives. Thank you for that, the fact that your favor has no end, that it lasts for our entire lifetime. Forgive us for sometimes forgetting that you are intimately equated with all of our ways, that you, you know, what concerns us, you cover us as with a shield. We ask that you would draw your blessing and goodness, that you would, that your face would shine on us, and you would open the right doors for our lives and for our loved ones and for this city. That you would close the long doors and protect us from those we need to just be away from. Establish the work of our hands and bring to fulfillment all that you have given us to do in these days. We pray you would make our way purposeful and our footsteps firm out of your goodness and love. Bless the city of Casa Grande, all its employees and leaders, and all of those on the front lines of the medical field and all its people. I especially ask for every person here this evening, your health and your happiness be with them as we make a new year. God bless the year of our Lord 2021, and keep us available and willing to do your work. Give us a heart of wisdom to hear your voice and make us strong by your favor and your grace. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. And Happy New Year. And thank you, Bob. Gloria, let the roll call show that everyone is present. Matt is present via telephone.
So noted.
Mayor, I move as far regarding the minutes that we moved for approval of city council regular meeting minutes from December 21st, 2020. And except for the record, the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board from September 7th, as they're both presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the claims dated December 16th through the 29th as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for the claims of December 16th through December 29th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. The meeting agenda approval, I do want to make a note that on our first published agenda, there was a call to the public that has been removed and was actually sent out today. Any other changes? We may want to move, we are going to have an executive session, right, Larry? So I think we already have the reports at the end, so it's good to go. Anybody else have any changes? Or do you want to move, I actually want to move the reports before the executive session. Can we do that? Okay, so item N, we will put, just following the item K on our agenda. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I'll take, make, take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. So we don't have any special presentations, so we'll move right into consent agenda. All items solicited with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that you want to remove?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, there's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote on the consent agenda items?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item are item I, award of contracts. First one is I1, Consider Ordinance Number 3248. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Try to receive both of the airport and their contracts and support of airport grant funding projects for awarding of grants. The first one is staff is recommending that the mayor and city council award a contract for airport design services to the two firms, CSM and Armstrong Consultants, provide engineering, construction management, and grant administration services to the grant funding projects on a needs basis for the airport. Pursuant to the FAA guidelines.
Do I need to start over? All right. Pursuant to the FAA guidelines, in order to provide design and support services to the airport grant projects, we did request qualifications from firms to provide these services to the airport. We had five submittals. And then per the FAA guidelines, we picked two firms to use throughout the five-year period for these projects. And then we alternate between the two firms depending on what grant projects are approved. There's no guarantee we'll enter into a task order for these projects based on these contracts. It's only in case a grant is approved. And the process would be, we would start those discussions based on these contracts with the firms to come up with a scope and fee for the project for that grant. And then as we come back to council to accept those grants, you would have an opportunity to see the scope and fee that we developed for each of these projects while you have the opportunity to approve that grant. So that's your opportunity to look at this and determine whether we move forward with the projects or not. So these contracts need to be in place in order to be eligible for the grants. Otherwise, we have no way of meeting the timelines that are established by ADOT and the FAA throughout this process. The physical impacts of these projects, typically grants are funded anywhere from 80% to 100%. So the city would be on the hook for the, that 20% to 5%, whatever that is, depending on the different grants. And they vary as we look at those. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Powell.
I just, I know we have two different groups there. And one does design service and the other engineering. And I do like the way it starts off, award of contract for fiscal year '21 through '26, airport design services dependent on receipt of grant funding, which I think is very good. And you need two of them because they do enough different, I assume, that to be complete with what we need to do at the airport, it would take both of them to help us.
That's correct. They, they never want one sole contractor to do all the projects, so they typically say pick two and then alternate between those. And at any point during this process, we can go back out and do another qualifications-based solicitation. If we're unhappy with any of the firms, we can start this process over. So we have it if we want it through 2026, but there's no requirement that we only use these firms moving forward. So if we ever become displeased with a firm or they're just not performing, we do have the ability to get out.
Thanks, Kevin. Sounds good.
Anyone else have any questions for Kevin? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call for ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3248, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of agreements with C. and S. Engineering, Inc. and Armstrong Consultants, Inc. for the purpose of providing airport design professional services for fiscal year 2021 through 2026, and authorize an execution by the city manager of the two agreements.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of ordinance 3248 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is yours, Kevin, is I2, Consider Ordinance Number 3249.
Yeah, so staff is recommending that the mayor and city council award a contract for airport planning services to Kaufman and Associates and Armstrong Consultants to provide planning, environmental, and grant administration services dependent on that grant funding and on an as-needed basis. Again, same, same process. We had five submittals, and we picked the top two qualified firms through that process. And again, these, these projects are funded anywhere from 80% to 100%. But we have to have these contracts in place prior to us applying for these grants. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Most all these grants would be FAA, right?
They can be FAA or ADOT.
Okay.
Or a combination of both.
Okay. These are ADOT, I think.
I think they're actually both.
Well, they, yeah, they.
It's, okay.
ADOT's administering.
They could be FAA-funded projects, but it's all administered through ADOT, so the mayor's correct.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Seeing no questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3249, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of agreements with Kaufman Associates, Inc. and Armstrong Consultants, Inc. for the purpose of providing airport planning professional services for fiscal years 2021 through 2026, and authorizing execution by the city manager of the two agreements.
Matt, this is yours.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance, trying to find the number.
3249.
3249 as presented. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is our boards and commissions. We have a couple new appointments that we need the council to consider. The first is J1, consider approving the appointment of Lisa Swanson and Ralph Varela to the Arts and Humanities Commission with terms to expire on September 30th. First, I just want to publicly thank them for volunteering. Lisa and Ralph, Ralph obviously has been past council member and very active in our community as well as Lisa as well. So we just want to thank them both for their service. Does anybody have any questions about this? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve these two as item J1.
Mayor McFarland, I move approving the appointment of Lisa Swanson and Ralph Varela to the Arts and Humanities Commission.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations to Lisa and Ralph, and thank you again both for your service. Next item is J2, consider approving the appointment of Dario Nora to the police, Dario, excuse me, to the Police Advisory Board with the term to expire February 20, 2022, and approve a waiver for the residency requirement rule.
Mayor McFarland, I move approving the appointment of Dario Nora to the Police Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any disapprovals? Okay. Again, thank you, Dario, for your service and for volunteering. It is greatly appreciated from your community. The last item on this, under the boards and commissions, is J3, consider approving the appointment of Jack Eisenhower to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the terms to expire on February 1st, 2023, and an approval, a waiver for the residency requirement rule also.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment. I saw a couple of the appointments are new people and were doing the waiver. And I was just happy to see that, you know, we're getting new people.
From Lucid Motors.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to get new people. I actually met the gentleman, Dario, at the dog park, and he had just moved here from LA and was really excited to get involved in the community, so I'm really happy that he followed up. And I actually think I met Jack also, so. So I'm just happy to see people that want to get engaged.
He's Lucid's international supply.
I think I met him at the dog park, too. I'm telling you, a lot of things happen at the dog park, people. So that's the place to be.
And Larry, I thought they were both residents, but they live out off of McCartney or something?
The opinion is that they both are residents, but they've not lived in the community for the period of time necessary.
Okay, because I thought they bought homes here in town, so, okay.
They do.
Yeah, they both do.
Okay, good.
So anyways, I'm just happy to see the appointment and the waiver and.
Yeah, they are both, both new residents, so.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mayor, I move approving the appointment of Jack Eisenhower to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great, okay. Again, thank you, Jack, for your service and for volunteering and welcome to Casa Grande. The next item is item K, ordinance resolutions and other matters. Item K1 is considering a resolution number 5273, planning and development. Mr. Tice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So tonight is the end of a 18-month process in the development of a new general plan for Casa Grande. Process that involved significant amount of public and stakeholder process that helped inform and shape the final plan that's out before you this evening. That's the slide on the screen kind of outlines what the process we've followed over the last 18 months, with the last, of course, being a public hearing before council on December 21st. The new plan really tried to address some emerging community issues that we heard through that process, specifically making sure that we linked our limited water resources to our growth and development scenarios, a desire to promote infill of vacant land that could be easily and efficiently provided with municipal services, the need to expand housing choices to accommodate all income levels and demographics, the desire to bring new activity and development into our downtown area, and lastly, to drive growth through the creation of new quality jobs through commercial and industrial development. I think the, the new plan does a really good job of addressing and developing strategies to, for all of those emerging issues. This is the land use plan, and I do want to make council aware of one change that occurred prior, after your last meeting, your public hearing regarding 100 acres that were changed from commerce and business to community corridor. The site is 100 acres on the west side of Panal, north of O'Neil, south of Cortson. You can see it outlined on the screen. The reason for the change was that, one, we realized that that site, I'll back up again, that site under the existing general plan is in our community corridor land use category. So it's community corridor today. We had proposed to put it into commerce and business, as you can see here, but we changed it back to community corridor to align, one, with the current general plan, and, two, we have a development proposal that's being formulated in that area that works in the community corridor land use category, but would not work as well in the commerce and business. So it's in the commerce, it's in the community corridor, similar to the category that it exists in today. So I just want to make you aware of that. It is shown, as you see on the screen, in the draft, the final draft of the plan, which I did attach as a PDF to the RCA. I don't know if you were able to open it, I hope so. But all the edits are, that have been made by, the final edits are reflected in the version that was provided to council and as well as this change. We do have to just, I want to note, have to change some, a little bit of text to show the 100 acres change, reduction in commerce and business and 100 acre increase in the commerce, the community corridor category. So we will make that small technical change, and then we will be doing a final printing of the plan, assuming if council approves it this evening, we'll do a final printing. We'll make it available in the clerk's office, available in the library. It's already available on the city website. And then we'll start engaging in the public information process to inform the citizens of what the plan entails in preparation for the vote in May 18th. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Powell.
Not a question, just, just a comment. The downtown, I think we have to do things to make some of these things come around like we want them to. And I think we need to market some way, getting some people, some vendors and stuff in the downtown area. You're providing the apartments and those type of things along the way, and I think it would, it needs that to really make it healthy. And the other thing I would say is basically, when it comes to water, the city should evaluate a collaboration with appropriate public or private entities. The federal government is a public entity. Additional water supplies to the Panal AMA, which can be used to support desired growth and development. I think we really need to look into that. But I have no, I mean, I stand behind, I think you did a great job, as I said last time. I just, to make these things happen, sometimes we just want to work hard, so. Maybe to Councilman Powell's point is that, you know, one of the next steps that we'll be working on as staff is an implementation strategy for the plan to prioritize some of the action steps in assigning responsibility for those, you know, staff or outside organizations that might take the lead in implementing those. So we are going to be working on an implementation strategy to accompany the plan probably between now and the public vote.
Yeah, we're going to be working on a, on a rollout plan here in January. We'll be doing some videos and some other things that will help support it, as well as the water conservation plan, you know, when our goal really is a 15% reduction in household water use. So that's, that's a big goal, and I think that would save us a lot of water as well, so. It's important, Mr. Powell. I totally agree with you.
Conservation is good, and then if we could get a new source also of water, it'd be really, really good.
Yep, totally agree. And thank, thank you, Paul, your staff, and you, and all the time, and really for all the citizen input as well, and the technical team and the citizen team really put a lot of time and effort into this, and it is greatly appreciated, the consultant also. So please tell her thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, you know, really to the, to the community for the input on this. I think it's been a community-wide effort.
Very inclusive.
I know Mr. Powell was part of our group and myself, and so we really had good input from a lot of people, so.
As well as Councilman Lavender.
That's true.
He was, he was on our committee as well.
He wasn't a councilman at the time.
No, he wasn't, but he was there. Thank you. It's been, really been a collaborative effort, and I think it's a plan we can all be proud of.
Yes. Thank you.
One more thing I would say, Mayor, is I don't know that anybody in Arizona's going to have a better general plan than we have right here.
I would agree. I would agree with you. I would agree. I would agree with you. Alright, well, thank you, Paul. Anybody else have any other comments?
Did you get your raise figured in, Paul?
Yeah, I'm working on my bonus.
Alright, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number five-two-seven-three, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, concerning the proposed general plan of the city, finding and determining certain facts, adopting the proposed general plan of the city, ordering the submittal of the proposed general plan by the call of election of the city for ratification, ordering availability of the general plan for public inspection, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five-two-seven-three as presented.
Second. Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Excellent. Then, K. Two, consider authorizing call for election for the city 2030 general plan. Gloria?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff would recommend that Mayor and council authorize the call for the election for the city's 2030 general plan, and authorize that this election be held by an all-male, M-A-I-L, ballot election. The election is scheduled for May eighteenth, 2021. This election, we're recommending that it be held by an all-male ballot election. One is that sixty-one percent of our registered voters in the city of Casa Grande are registered to receive their ballot by mail. We don't think that if you hold a poll-voting election, that it would increase the voter turnout significantly. And then, of course, there is the cost of the election. To hold an all-male ballot election, it is estimated that the county would charge us seventy-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars. If we do a regular election, which they have told me, it's nineteen polling places, it is possible that we could consolidate those polling places, but that would still have to be determined by Pinal County Elections Department. That election would cost us eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Of note, for this election, it will include a publicity pamphlet. We have received quotes from two local vendors, so we will be able to use a local vendor to print our publicity pamphlet. So as soon as we get that information from our planning department, we'll be ready to submit that information for translation and then over to our printer.
Laurie, so the other forty percent that aren't signed up, will they still get a ballot?
Yes, in an all-male ballot, every registered voter will receive a ballot.
Just wanted to make that clear.
And then there will be a replacement center designated with our county recorder office here in Casa Grande. So if your dog happens to eat your ballot, you can go in there and you can get a replacement ballot.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions, Mr. Powell?
Have we done an all-mail-in ballot election before?
In my prior term here with the city, we did a all-male ballot election.
Was that a home rule or something?
It was, yeah.
Okay. And that went smoothly? No issues that we...
Not that I'm aware of. We've not had any issues. I think the most important is going out there really and letting the public know that we are going to do an all-male, all-male ballot election, and we'll do that through advertisement in our local newspaper. We'll put it on our website. We'll just try to promote it as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
And I think that's my point, is I wanted to make sure that we are promoting it, and then is there going to be an opportunity for people to register to vote? So is it going to be like a regular election where so many days before you can register?
That is correct. All the deadlines apply to a special election. And again, we do advertise, you know, this is the last day for you to register to vote. We put it on our website, so hopefully...
Because there may be new voters who've turned eighteen since the last full election, so, yeah, that's a good point. Donna?
You know, I just want to make a point that I'm really encouraged that we're looking at an all-male, M-A-I-L, election, and for several reasons. One, I think it's cost-effective, but also where we're at right now may sounds like a long time away, but in actuality, it's not. And so I think that it kind of ensures that we can still have that participation and be safe to the community.
I'd also like to note that once the city calls for an all-male ballot, if there's, you know, school-type of election for any reason, then they would have to join in the male ballot. But we have clarified with the school districts that they don't have anything planned for the May election.
Okay, but something could get tacked onto it.
It is possible, but once we call for the all-male ballot, then they would have to also put it on an all-male ballot. We wouldn't have an all-male ballot and then a polling place. It would be an all-male ballot election.
Yeah, Lisa?
Another question. I know we've had discussion about the possibility of changing some things on our charter. Is this something, we couldn't go in on this for a charter election, right? I mean, we're going to have to do it totally separate, and is that going to be its own election later down the road?
Right. I think Councilmember Fitzgibbons, it's a matter of timing at this point, because you're really calling the election now, and the deadlines are, what, a hundred and twenty days, you know, to sixty days out. So if amending the charter is something we want to do, we're certainly going to look into what that process would be.
Okay.
And then schedule that separately, though, likely from this one. Simply the time to try to turn that and get it included on this is probably too aggressive.
It's probably, it'd probably be 2022, I would bet.
But this is about what the cost is, gives us an idea of what an all-male, M-A-I-L.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Powell?
Just a comment. I think we can worry about our voting count a lot more than the rest of the nation is right now with the mail-in. And like you said, I think the biggest thing, Laurie, is everybody knows about it, and if they want to vote, they have the opportunity and...
Okay, excellent. No more questions or comments, then I will call for...
It's a motion.
...a vote for the election. I need a motion to consider authorizing the call for the election of the city's 2030 general plan to be held on May eighteenth, and authorize...
Mayor McFarland?
...an all-mail-in ballot election. Yes, Matt?
Matt's got it.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Can I, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Did I hear an aye, Matt?
Aye.
Aye from me. Alright, great. So it's been approved, Gloria. You can move forward.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item is our reports, actually, is next. So we'll, because then we're going to go into executive session after the reports. So I'll start to my right. Bob, you want to start?
No report. I've been kind of homebound for the last month or so, but anyway, thank you to the council for approving my absence at the last meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
I do have some information to share. This is something that, you know, we know that 2020 was a pretty darn tough year. This goes back to some of the statistics from the year 1920, which was a hundred years ago. The average life expectancy for men was forty-seven years. Fuel for cars was sold in drugstores only. Only fourteen percent of homes had a bathtub. Only eight percent of the homes had a telephone. Maximum speed limit in most cities was ten miles an hour. Tallest structure in the world was the Eiffel Tower. The average US wage in 1920 was twenty-two cents an hour. The average US worker made two hundred to four hundred dollars a year. A competent accountant could expect to make about two thousand a year, and a dentist twenty-five hundred a year. A veterinarian, I guess, and it depends if he's doing racehorses or dogs, from fifteen hundred to four thousand a year. Ninety-five percent of the births took place at home. Ninety percent of the doctors had no college experience whatsoever. They had medical schools that were available, which the government condemned, that they would go to and learn how to... Sugar was four cents a pound. Dozen eggs was fourteen cents. Twenty percent of adults couldn't read or write. Two hundred and thirty murders in the USA. It's a little different than today, huh?
That's my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Lisa?
I don't have anything like that, but all's I have to... But it is interesting, and, you know, of course, we're all looking forward to 2021 and hoping that it's a good year ahead of us. But I just wanted to thank, I mean, you know, the last two weeks have been the holidays, and of course, it's, you know, busy and crazy times out there for people, and especially with the stress of COVID, and people are still losing jobs, people are still struggling, you know, but I did want to just thank our healthcare providers. I mean, we, you know, I've been hearing such great things about the vaccine in the county. Of course, you hear some things that are going on, but then there's, you know, they're doing their best, and this is all new to us, you know, trying to get this vaccine out there. But, you know, it's nice to see how, you know, they're doing it in our county versus some of the other counties. Definitely not perfect, but, you know, we all just have to be patient and pray and hope that we can, you know, all get vaccinated and move on with our lives. But I did want to thank everyone, because it has been crazy, and I know Larry even getting the information and trying to get it out, and it's just, you know, constantly changing. So I just wish everyone a happy and safe New Year, and hopefully we can get through this here soon, so that's it.
Donna?
Just a couple of quick things. Kudos to the fire and police for New Year's Eve. It was a lot different this year with all of the agencies kind of staying within their own boundaries, but they were still out there, and the roadways were busy early, and so they were out working on our behalf. Just to echo what Lisa said about the vaccine, and especially to our health department and to some of our local facilities that have offered the vaccine, I will tell you that I was, I proudly was in line early the day that I was told that I qualified for it, and I was amazed at how organized they were and how ready they were for this. And I know that right now, it is full. What I heard today was that there are no available appointments until the eleventh, because everybody is going after them. So I appreciate those people that have chosen to do that. And then I know that, I believe Mr. Lavender is going to mention about the fireworks, so I will hold off on that. So that's my report.
Jeff?
Well, I want to congratulate Casa Grande's own Jesus Ramos, who is fourteen and own now, is a professional fighter, and he won a nationally televised fight on December twenty-sixth, representing our community. I also want to give a shout-out to the Casa Grande Alliance. A couple of years ago, I thought this organization was going to go under. Donna kept it afloat till we got a new executive director, Bob Shogren, and Bob has done a phenomenal job bringing this organization back, changing the focus from really slogans to getting kids involved in different things, and his staff is doing wonderful things. And the Casa Grande Alliance is a real partner with the school district in providing a place for these kids to go. And the fourth, and New Year's Eve was a concern about the level of fireworks, whether these are legal, illegal fireworks, I don't know. From what I understand of law, I think a lot of them are illegal. I know of two dogs that lost their lives on New Year's Eve that I'm aware of already, that were just flat-out scared. I know my wife and I, we took our dog to Hala Bend about nine-thirty, because we couldn't get her to calm down because of the fireworks in our neighborhood. So we did not shop local. We had ice cream in Hala Bend and came back at twelve-thirty. But I think that's something we need to, I think it's getting out of hand. And I know Donna, I talked to her a little bit. She saw some of this, and has heard some of the same concerns.
Alright, thank you, Bob, or Mr. Lavender. Thank you, Jeff. I don't have a whole lot, I just, you know, the holidays. Oh, Matt. I'm sorry, Matt, forgot.
That's okay, I'm just listening.
Out of sight, out of mind, you know.
Yep, that's me. But it sounds like everyone's on the right track. Thank you, guys, for your support tonight, and, you know, just be careful out there and stay safe. That's all I can say, reading the news today and everything, how all the infections are up. It's everywhere, so just be careful. And the youth commission's trying to have a meeting this month, so working on that to stay safe and how we can navigate that. But anyway, thank you all very much.
Matt, how are you doing?
That's all I have. I'm doing fine, thank you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, actually, yeah, doing good. Trying to keep all the balls in the air, so doing alright. Thank you.
Alright, stay safe and don't infect anybody.
Okay.
Alright. So, my typical report usually includes some stuff about COVID-19, so I won't disappoint. Today, the state of Arizona reported its five-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-second cases of COVID. It's a big number. In fact, in the last seven days, we have reported in the state of Arizona fifty-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen cases in the last seven days. That's almost ten percent of all the cases since we've been reporting back in March. In the last thirty days, it's almost thirty-six percent of all the cases. So most of our cases have occurred in the last probably sixty days, if you put it all together. We're sitting, the state's sitting at about eight-hundred-and-thirty-six cases per one-hundred-thousand. Our target is a hundred. The county is at six-hundred-and-eighty-six cases per one-hundred-thousand, and our 85122 is at eight-hundred-and-five. So the county is actually doing better than the state and better than our 85122. The county right now, in the last seven days, has had about two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-six cases. They're sitting, we've had a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one deaths in the county. 85122, we are, we've had eight, four-hundred-and-eighty-three cases in the last seven days, four-hundred-and-eighty-three cases in our zip code. In the last thirty days, we've had seventeen-hundred-and-eighty-eight cases. Again, that's thirty-eight percent of all the cases since we've been tracking in March, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight days ago. Our infection rates for the state are thirty-five percent. The county, these are rolling averages, seven-day rolling averages. The county is at twenty-nine percent, so we're a little better than the state and the county, and I don't have it for 85122, because we don't track the number of tests. So, Pinal County's tests continue pretty heavily. We're, we've done over two-hundred-thousand tests in Pinal County alone. The state has done over three million, three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand tests since the start. So a lot of testing, that's good, but also, if you look at the infection rate, that's a function of the number of positive tests versus the number of tests that are done. So that's kind of the measure that I really look at, and so our positivity rates are up, and they continue to climb. So I continue to ask people to please be safe, please mask up, don't go out if you're sick. That's the biggest challenge, I know, but if you can stay home and isolate, that will prevent other people from getting the virus. The other thing I wanted to mention was testing. Testing is still available, at least for the short term. We think that the county is running out of money in terms of paying for testing. I don't know when that will end, but I think it's coming, so just want to forewarn everybody. And then as far as getting the vi, getting the virus, as far as getting the vaccine, there are fourteen providers, actually fifteen or sixteen now with Safeway coming online, that are providing vaccines. But to Donna's point, I have heard that they are all out of vaccines, at least for now, in the short term. There's still, I think, they're still administering some vaccines. There's a couple that still have some left, but basically all the appointments are gone. And so please continue to monitor the county's website. They will let you know when the vaccines are back and when they're available. So, and then we will also monitor it as a city and our staff, and we'll make sure... city and our staff, and we'll make sure that we put that on our website as well, to make sure that everybody is informed. And I'll obviously try and be as vocal about it as possible and make sure that the community is aware when the vaccine is again available, so that people can get in line, so to speak. Right now, we're 1A.
Is it appropriate to ask a question?
Let me finish, and then I'll.
That's fine, I didn't, I thought you were finished, I'm sorry.
I almost got, just a couple more things. We're, 1A is medical workers, and then 1B is our police and fire necessary, or what they call.
Essential.
Essential workers, which, again, are our police and our fire, and then also teachers, they're in that 1B group, and if you want to know what group you're in, you can go to the state's website, ADHS, and you can also go to the county's website, and they have it all outlined, all the different groups, and who's in those groups, so if you, if you're interested to find out, and the next group is the 1C, which is really the largest group, and that's, that starts to get into the general public.
Did you have a question, Mr. Powell?
Is that all right, or?
I just remind everyone that the purpose of reports is not to have discussion, so if there's a question that you can potentially report on, that's okay, but once we start discussing or proposing legislation, we're outside the purview of reports. I can't really answer it without the question, but, without knowing the question.
I will.
He'll ask it later. Okay, and then just to remind everybody, please stay safe out there, I do want to, I want to give out a couple of thank yous and accolades. I got a really nice email from the CEO of Banner Casa Grande about our fire, our police department, and he was just thanking us, and he was so grateful for, his staff and physicians, so grateful for the help of the Casa Grande Police Department. So a big shout out to the police department and to everybody who's been so helpful with this whole pandemic and helping manage people and manage our situations that everybody's been faced with, so I just want to thank, thank everybody for that, and thank our police department, thank you Chief McCrory, and he's not here, so I can't harass him, but also, we were awarded, AARP awarded, the Pinal Alliance for Economic Growth, which the city is a part of, they awarded us $75,000 for our reading program. So that's an excellent, a super-nice award, and great for the program, and hopefully we're going to make a big impact on third-grade readers and make sure that we get our reading scores up, so that's, I think, where it starts. If we can get those kids reading and at a high proficiency level, that follows them all the way through college, so, or at least through high school, so. That's all I have, want to thank everybody, want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and let's, let's hope for this COVID thing to die down, and we can kind of get back to some level of normalcy, whatever that might be. So Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Any other comments or questions, staff, anything? Okay. Stand adjourned.